Oh, Canada! Our home is in black. To page the law, we love our suns and land. We know in hearts we see right, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God give our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest this evening on council? Counselor Dunn?
On the water main.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Item number two for me, your worship.
Okay. Both the same, are they?
Yes.
Very good. Anything else? No? Good. Move on to approval of council minutes. First one, minutes held regarding the Court of Revision, held May 2nd, 2016. Looking for a move or second here. Counselor Dunn, Counselor Hammond, discussion on the motion. All in favor? Okay. As well, the minutes of the council meeting held May the 9th. Counselor Wilkinson and Counselor Rubiki, discussion on that motion. All in favor? Okay. And finally, the minutes of special closed meeting held May 2nd and May 9th, is the correction, 2016. Looking for a move or a second here. Counselor Jacobs, Counselor Wilkinson, discussion on that motion. All in favor? Okay. Is there any businesses rising out of those minutes? I see none. There are no public meetings or Court of Revision this evening, but we do have some reports. And the first one is a report regarding the municipality of Leamington Waters financial plan. So Shannon, I'm sure you're taking us through this. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. We don't have a hard copy of the presentation that you're going to make. Would it be all right if we interject and ask questions as she goes through that? So would that work? I know she has a PowerPoint, but...
I believe Gary has some hard copies for you to follow along as well.
That'll work. Okay. Thank you.
But yes, Gary's going to take us through the presentation, so if you have questions while we're going through.
It's the same thing we've got electronically, right?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, he didn't bring yours with him. Should be good. Yep.
Okay. Thank you, your worship, and members of council. Tonight, I'd like to recommend that council approve the financial plan that was developed for Leamington's municipal drinking water distribution system. In order to maintain a municipal drinking water system license, the following must be in place for municipality: a permit to take water, a drinking water works permit, an operational plan, an accredited operating authority, and a financial plan. All of these are currently in place for Leamington's distribution system. The initial financial plan was approved by Watson and Associates in 2010 and was done in conjunction with the 2010 rate study. In 2015, Watson was retained by administration to prepare a financial plan based on the 2016 Water and Wastewater Rate Update Report. That report, according to OREG 45307, outlines that a financial plan must be approved by council resolution, must include a statement that the financial impacts of the system have been considered, it must apply for a period of at least six years, include details of proposed or projected financial operations, present financial position itemized by assets, liabilities, debt, non-financial assets, and tangible capital assets, include details of gross cash receipts and gross cash payments, and also include changes in cash and cash equivalents during the year. Once the plan is prepared and approved, it must be made available on request to members of the public who are served by Leamington Water Services, and also be made available to members of the public without charge through publication on the Internet. The municipality must also provide notice advising the public of the availability of the plan in a manner that will bring the notice to the attention of the members of the public who are served by the system. A copy of the plan must also be submitted to the Director of Policy Branch for the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and also a copy of the council resolution approving the plan needs to be provided to the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change. Watson, Gary Scanlon is here from Watson, and he will be making a presentation to council outlining the implications of the plan on the rate structure for the municipality. The rate update report was also provided to council under separate cover with this report. It's not intended that council approve any changes to water or wastewater rates at this time. The 2016 rate increases were done during budget deliberations earlier in the year. So the recommendation before council is that the municipality of Leamington plan prepared by Watson be approved, and that notice of availability of the plan be advertised. The financial plan and council resolution approving the plan must be forwarded to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and also that the plan and the council resolution approving the plan be forwarded to the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Gary, and he'll take us through his presentation. And if there are any questions during the presentation, I'm sure Gary will be happy to address those, or I can address them as we go through.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be before council again, and yes, at any time, I'm more than happy to answer any questions. I'll move through relatively quickly, but I'm more than happy to slow down, you know, broaden any of my comments, whatever you like. I just don't want to take up your whole evening, so to speak. So I think that's a great introduction by Shannon. Thank you. What we're providing is really two things. The water rate, water and wastewater rate study, which really is, for the most part, a forward forecast of your operating budget, your capital budget, and then identifies the supporting rates. And it's with that information, we can then translate it into the mandatory reporting format that the province wants. So it's almost like they translate it into a financial statement format. I like to say they translate it into piece Abeneze. So it's something where they want standardized formats for receiving the information. But really, to understand what's going on and to have a better handle, the rate study is a far better communication document. But I'll transcend the two of them, but I got to start by talking about the, really, the water rate study, and then I'll tell you about the financial plan at the end. Just quickly, I'm going to give you a little bit of background on the legislation, because it's always the legislation for water and for wastewater that has the most influence on rates, and there's continuing changes since Walkerton. You know, we've had many, many years of legislative changes, and I'll just briefly go over a little bit of where we've been and what's coming up next. And then I'll go through the different elements that you'd want to consider as part of your, the rate study. So the, this just summarizes since Walkerton, there's been five key pieces of legislation that we've had to deal with. The Safe Drinking Water Act is the major piece of legislation for water. It's the one that regulates everything in the water business. It talks about doing the testing, it oversees the labs, oversees all of the workers, the accreditation of the municipality, all the different parameters on how you carry out the maintenance of the system. And there's probably, I think, something like 17, 18 different pieces of regulations which really tell you how to do the day-to-day operations for your water system. At the same time that was passed, it was the Sustainable Water and Sewage Systems Act, which was in place. It really was the one that established the first financial plan. It talked about, you know, really doing an evaluation of your infrastructure, like an asset management plan, seeing how it's performing. It actually would have required a certification by an engineer, and it would then be the basis for looking at a long-term, look at asset replacement, and your long-term water and wastewater rates. That act was not put into place, it was the regulations, the act was put into place, it never had the regulations. And it was repealed in 2012. And two things happened. On the interim, we, in 2007, we had this OREG 45307, that's under the Safe Drinking Water Act, and it's the one that basically requires a financial plan to be done. This Sustainable Water and Sewage Systems Act was the one that would have carried out that financial plan, but as an interim measure, the province put this regulation into place. And it's really looking at doing, taking from the rate studies, putting your plan to file to the province in a very standardized format. It's, I'll touch on it at the very end with a couple of slides, but really, that's the difference, is to put it into a standardized format. I won't touch much on the Clean Water Act, but that's another piece which is dealing with things that are watershed management area. And the last one is the Water Opportunities Act. The Water Opportunities Act is, came, well, I'll have a couple of slides for you, but it's the one that really is going to stand in the shoes of the Sustainable Water and Sewage Systems Act. And it's actually more robust than what was originally there in the former act, so I'll go through that. Just other things, municipal infrastructure strategy plan was set out by the province, moving us towards asset management, and actually, I should have dropped on there, that as of May 1st, the province put into effect the Infrastructure for Jobs and Prosperity Act, and that one will require you to do full-blown asset management plans. The regulations aren't in place, even though, once again, the act is, but the, you're basically given three years to conform, and it's a more rigorous level of asset management than what we've had before. So there's more coming down the pipe. Our firm will be working with the municipal finance officers in reviewing the regulations and looking to ensure that the regulations really reflect properly what municipalities could and should do as part of long-term asset management plans. So that'll be done in the summer, and we would expect the regulations to be out in the fall on that. So more to come, so to speak. So water opportunities, there's three different components of it. One which was really for the province to foster the whole water and wastewater industry. So they want to encourage research, innovative technologies, innovative approaches to providing the water and wastewater service. So there's a whole first section of the act that embraces that concept. The second part talks about water conservation plans, so looking that, to establish conservation targets for municipalities, and looking for them to basically achieve those targets. The third part is where, as I mentioned, is going to stand in the shoes of the Sustainable Water and Sewage Systems Act. And it's the one that requires, it, just by the by, this was put into place at the end of 2010. We have some minor regulations, but only that relate to the first section. They don't reflect for the municipal rates and financial plans yet, but I think with the Infrastructure for Jobs to Prosperity, Jobs and Prosperity Act, that's the one that's leading a lot of the asset management, and then this act will kick in for water and wastewater, and provide a little bit more robust reporting. And if you take a look, it's going to require, as you can see, an asset management plan for the physical infrastructure, so a long-term replacement plan. There'll be different elements in there, I'm sure, about performance and, you know, how to offset maybe capital with operating improvements, et cetera. A financial plan, which is really the long-term rate setting, operating, combining your capital budget, your operating budget, and then taking a look at your financial resources, and taking a look at rates, et cetera. So there'll be a longer term, really similar to what we've done for the rate study. You can see from Section 2 of the act to incorporate that conservation plan, and then the next two items, the fourth is to an assessment of risk that may interfere with the future delivery of municipal service, including, if required by regulations, the risk posed by climate change, and a plan to deal with those risks. I was working with an international group, which is universities, conservation authorities, different ministries, that were looking at the impact of infrastructure and climate change. So there's a lot of, lot of plans out there to kind of integrate better infrastructure to deal with climate change. Obviously, if we have wider swings in climates, more droughts, or more, or floods, they're looking to incorporate more of that into the replacement of the assets. The last one is strategies for maintaining and improving the municipal service to ensure future demand can be satisfied, consider technologies to improve the service, and potential increased cooperation with other municipal service providers. Obviously, to spread, you know, the knowledge, and the cooperative carrying out of the systems. So this is what we anticipate seeing coming over probably the next three years, as the rollout of the Infrastructure Act gets rolled into your whole finances. So I'll leave that there. That's just a little bit of a backdrop, but as you can see, we've been heavily influenced historically where we're at today, and moving forward, you're still going to have to consider these changes, and your capital budgets, your operating budgets are going to be influenced by future changes. Right now, you've got, for water and wastewater rates, you have basically, for, you have two components of a rate. You have what we call a base monthly charge, or a charge, because you have a meter, and whether you're consuming anything or not consuming anything, you're going to pay $20 a month towards the water system. Even if you're not consuming, you still need to make contributions, because while you're down in Florida, per se, for three months, the municipality's still taking care of all of the infrastructure, you know, ensuring that even if you had any problems with water may breaks, you're going to address that situation. So it's common practice, 85% of the municipalities provide this type of charge. We then have several different rates that are there for different types of metered users. For the, we have residential and commercial users, who basically pay $3.50 on top of their monthly bill, they pay $3.50 per 1,000 gallons, or 70 cents, 7 cents per cubic meter. When we get into commercial and regulated greenhouses that have a larger than 1-inch meter size, you can see that the charge goes up a bit, goes from your 77 cents per cubic meter up to 842. And then for those that are on drip irrigation, or unregulated municipality, greenhouses, it increases even more to just over 90 cents per cubic meter. You can see when you get over three acres for the drip irrigation, unregulated greenhouse, we then jump up to $1.83. So you've had these different rates in places, or this different structure in place for approximately 10 years. If you don't have a meter, we've got a monthly flat rate that you'll pay. Sometimes it's not possible to put a meter into a house, so we have that type of rate. And then you can see that we have these, if you have a fire line, there's an added charge, there's the hydrant maintenance charge, if you've got those on your property, and then there's a wholesale rate in place. So we've incorporated all of these into the calculations. There are different segments and different volumes associated with them. A little easier to see it on the wastewater side, you've got your monthly rate, and then you've got your volume rate of $1.92. In addition, there's a charge that goes back onto, onto the tax rate as well, but this is the metered component of the service.
Before you go on, Gary?
Yes.
Counselor Hammond, do you have a question?
Your worship, thanks for picking up on that.
Yeah.
Gary, a question. What is an unregulated greenhouse?
You made the distinction sometime back. Regulated greenhouses basically have a reservoir, so you can, you know, you can fill it up in off-peak times and then draw. So you're not putting, it's, in order to reduce your peak loads at different times of the day, so that's, if you've invested in the reservoirs, you get a lower rate, is basically what it is. If you haven't, it means that the municipality is basically at the mercy, you turn on the tap, and the municipality has to serve it. So that all comes into the capacity of the plant, because part of the sizing of the plant is, when you hit these peaks, you have to have enough pumping power, you have to have enough storage, and you have to take into effect, oh my God, what happens if I have a fire at the same time? So it's a cost-saving measure, basically, in order to make sure that you don't have to oversize your plant. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Rubiki?
With the mayor, thanks. The one that really kind of messes me up is the flat rate. So how are they, I mean, you say you can't put a meter in, but yet they have town water in there. I just can't understand why, and how are they then charged on their wastewater?
They're, okay, we haven't got a charge. They'd have a similar, they'd have a similar charge, we didn't establish it. What we normally do is take a look at the average amount of water usage, so that we calculate a volume charge and the monthly base charge, and basically just combine them together, and that becomes the flat rate.
And just, with the mayor to continue, I see Nelson's here. Is there any idea on how many non-metered houses, pits, commercials that we have?
Your worship, members of council? Yeah, there's probably about 13 in total. And just to give you a little more insight into what it is, so for example, we may have in an apartment building that has one central meter coming in, and they have six units or seven units, and for the side of hydro, they've all been separated, but during its original design or setup, it was never separated for water. So what they do is they charge the apartments, flat rate fee, both on water and on sewage the same. So this is where we get into the flat rate. Not many, I think there's 12 or 13 left in the, in the system.
Okay. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, worship. The monthly flat, the fire line flat rate, what's that?
Yeah. Do you want to, go ahead.
Counsel, um, flat rate fee for the hydrants, we take care of six hydrants in town. When we say that, everyone's got hydrants on private property, but there are three that we maintain for the some part of our home, and there's three that we maintain for the ferry terminal. With those, at the federal docks, we assess, a monthly assessment fee coming back to that. We used to have other ones that were in the Wheatley side of things, that it's a private hydrant that we maintain on behalf of them, and then charge them accordingly to cover the cost.
Carry on.
And this just gives you a profile. It actually kind of works right into the, a nice segue into the question. How many non-metered flat rates we have? 14 for water and 13 for wastewater. So this gives you a profile. And see, most of our users are residential users, about 8,300 in the water out of 9,200, and then you can see the different, how many different customers are into those different structures.
Counselor Rubiki?
The mayor, thanks. I see with the greenhouses regulated now, that is, say, 115 you've got there. So that would be, that would be greater than 1 inch? So I guess what I'm concerned is how many, I mean, when you go back to, that some of the unregulated are paying $1 more per meter squared, meter for square, 3 metered, I just find it hard to believe that, you know, we're trying to use more water, and trying to, you know, those guys can use more water, but they can't, because, you know, they don't have the reservoirs and the demand, so I just, so there's only, now, is it 15 unregulated, less than 3 acres? I mean, how many are out there, I guess, that are unregulated? We know of a couple, but is there a lot?
Your worship and council, actually, there are landlocked areas. So when we get into the unregulated, to give you an idea, you're on Seacliff. Seacliff, when we drew the line at 3 acres, greater than 3 acres, was deemed more of an impact to the system. Everybody on Seacliff that might, we'll say the Ma and Pa greenhouses that started out, they had about 3 and 1/2 acres. Now, when we say 3 and 1/2 acres, that's not total growing space, that's actual acreage of greenhouses. By the time they got to tear down a portion of the greenhouse to accommodate the reservoir and the rate of flow control valve, the cost to them is substantial. So they were left in that category. There isn't very many, to tell you the truth. Our numbers might be just, I mean, they're close. But when we get into the regulated as well, and we're talking about 115 customers, with that being said, there are multiple meters in each of these greenhouses as well. They might have two and three accounts, some even four accounts under one greenhouse. So when it comes up as greenhouses, that's why the number seems a little lower than what most may think. But there isn't very many. If I was to take a guess, I'd probably say 95% of the greenhouses today are all regulated.
Oh, I'm sorry. One more. Counselor?
Thank you, worship. What's your forecast? And I noticed that in the, further in the report, that in the tables and everything else, usually, like, for 2015, total acres, 13, and I noticed in the appendum that we read online, that there's like 25 acres per year. What formula are you using? Because I know that we're exceeding more than 13 acres. When a guy builds anything anymore, he's up 20, 25 acres a crack. I don't, like, I'm having a hard time with the rationale.
It's probably the way that we're laying out. I mean, the existing greenhouses, their flows are recorded down in this bottom portion. What we have up here is further growth. So what we're, what we're trying to provide up here is further residential growth. Their average usage is about 175 cubic meters per year. So what we're trying to do is to forecast the additional flows that would be coming on with that growth. The next table down gives you the forecast additional flows with greenhouses coming on. So we forecast, this is 13 additional acres of greenhouses. All the existing ones that are right now in meters, that were kind of shown on this prior slide, their numbers are actually down here. So we have actual flows with them. So all this was supposed to do was to basically add the additional amount of flows that'll be expected, over and above what you have today, the additional we expect to see over the next 10 years, additional flows and additional customers.
Okay. And you don't think that you are a little bit low in that estimate? I mean, looking at the way they're putting these structures up currently, I think we just had one of 77, I want to see about 20 acres out there?
122 or 3,000 this year.
122. And I guess that's where I'm looking at. I noticed that in your, as I said before in the appendum there, that I was looking at, it was based on 25 acres this year, next year, and I think the third or fourth year. And I just wondering, is that going to impact us with your low estimates, or are we?
Well, it was based on conversations with, with staff, you know, kit, when we were going through. If we are a little bit low on the estimates, remember, this is 13, this assumes 13 being onstream for the full year, so that if you had 25, and they come, some come on in, you know, in March, some come on in June, some come on at the end of the year, and not getting your full year's flows, we get a full year's flows subsequent. But if we're underestimating, that means that we won't be generating a deficit, we may be generating a slight positive. But it's been difficult. I mean, I remember historically, you know, trying to peg, what's the number? And we would peg a number, and we'd get zero for that year, so it's always a bit of a crapshoot, so to speak. So what we did was basically to... So what we did was basically to kind of spread what we estimated on an even basis right across the growth forecast is basically.
And I guess that's where my concern was, because I know that we had these estimates before that were really, to me, were somewhat exaggerated. And I think with the new technology and the systems they have there today, they've reduced drastically the amount of water that they're utilizing. And that's why I was wondering, like, if you're just projecting this, but then we have, say, 100 acres come online next year, which is a highly likely possibility today. And I just want to know that we're not, you know, really clearing the system up so that we say, well, we haven't got enough water to supply you and in reality, we actually do. So I guess that's where I'm going with these lower estimates in the system. So thank you, worship.
Okay. Further?
So this just, as I say, pretty well overviewd what this is. This is just kind of what we go through to make the estimates, taking a look at the housing, unit growth, as well as the acreages. The key thing is, looking at this over time, is to make sure that we've got the adequate capacity to build it. And I don't, I don't think there was any issue. As I say, if we're a little, if we're on the conservative side, I'd rather be on a conservative side and generate a bit of a surplus rather than a bit of a deficit in any particular year. And it's been very difficult to identify how many, you know, how many acres from time to time, so. And then on the non-residential side, obviously, the greenhouses aren't influencing that. So we've just got the residential users. And similar on the bottom, there was the forecast flows, we're just layering it on top. So we both take the number of users, that goes into that base monthly charge calculation. And these new flows get added on to do the rate per cubic meter calculation. Work with staff to identify capital needs over the next 10 years. 10 years, a lot of the needs are, there's some infrastructure implementation there, there's some changes due to minor regulatory changes and such. For water, this is the full listing. We've tried to give you the years in which all of these will be undertaken. In total, we've got about, for water, about 20, 22 and a half million dollars of capital. So it's roughly $2.25 million per year on average. On the wastewater side, we've identified about $49 million. We've got projects in here that would be funded by the rates and by the tax rate, so user rates and tax rates. You see, there's a lot of, a lot planned in here for separating the combined sewers into separate sewers over the 10-year forecast, and that represents about half of the, half of the capital. We have obviously not a lot of opportunities, well, there's not many options when you're looking at funding the capital. You basically have, you know, reserves which are putting money aside, you know, either today or historically, in order to build up the reserves, to have them to fund it. You can do in-year transfers to your capital budget or you can do, if you have development charges, you can utilize some of those funds to offset the growth-related costs. Debt is an option. It basically, if you don't have the money in, at the moment, you can issue the debt and then it basically gets paid for by the rates. But it still really is internal financing because it's just like a mortgage. You're just cash flowing it over a longer period of time. We haven't built in grants at this particular point. We will be monitoring, doesn't mean that staff won't be applying when the opportunities are there. And then we just talk about municipal act or they're almost like a local improvement in order to compose charges on areas that may be looking to expand, they haven't got the services now, but expand into those areas. So with the financing, what we've got is, on the water, we've got water meter replacement reserve, we've got money going in, so that'll be drawn out. And then the way that we've planned it is each and every year, we've taken the money that would be coming from the rates, we've put it into the reserves, and then we've drawn it out so that we're regulating kind of the ups and downs of the capital expenditures for planning purposes. What we've done is transferred it into the reserve. So we may transfer in a million dollars this year, but only take out 500,000. We'll transfer in a million dollars next year, but we'll take out a million and a half. So it's just the way that we've done it is to work everything through the reserves in order to smooth the year-to-year impacts on your rates. So that's why you see all the money coming out of the reserves. Same thing here on the wastewater. You can see we've got wastewater reserves for the portion that's funded by the metered rate. And then there's the transfer from the urban tax rate to fund a large portion of this program. And a little bit, we've got some money in the DC reserves to draw. So that's the capital program. You saw that we started talking about life cycle, infrastructure. And this is, as I say, this is the asset management piece, or this is the background why the province is putting so much emphasis on asset management these days. You can see that you're not too dissimilar from many other municipalities across the province. The water system dates back to 1930s, not all of it, but, you know, you started putting into place back in the 1930s, your infrastructure. Wastewater went back to 1910. In the total value, we've got 118 million for water and we've got 126 in wastewater. So when you take a look at that on a per customer basis, the amount that you as a municipality has invested is about $13,000 per customer for water and about $20,000 per customer for wastewater. That's a significant investment, especially if you have very old infrastructure. That's coming at you fairly quickly. You need to start putting money away in order to, you're either going to dementia or you're going to have very high spiked rates, or you need to start stockpiling in the reserves. So this is generally, especially with this on water and wastewater, why the province is moving as quickly towards these asset management plans. You can see, I've kind of detailed on this one, where your expenditures or your components of the infrastructure are. The large component obviously is water mains. The treatment facility obviously is provided for at the union system. And then on the wastewater side, you've got the treatment facility here and then you've got the combined sewers and sanitary sewers. So you've got $126 million on that side. We've embraced roughly about, in total, about $50 million out of the 250 million over the next 10 years. So that's a, that's a, you're moving towards doing a fair amount of replacements over the next 10 years. You can see that still leaves you with a longer-term plan, but I think your rates are at a level that you'd be able to basically address these type of needs. The operating side, the operating budget, there's no real magic there. Obviously, most of our expenditures are influenced by inflation, so most of the expenditures have been assumed to go up at 2% per year. There are certain things that go up faster than inflation, utilities, fuels, chemicals, certain other materials, they've been tracking much higher than 2%. So we've provided, now, they only represent maybe 10% of your whole budget, but we've included them going up at 5% per year. And this gives a perspective on the influences over time of your budgets. You see, the largest portion is the blue, that's your operating budget. So for water right now, it's $6 million for 2016. And the capital component, what you're transferring into reserves or transferring to the capital program or paying debt charges, represents almost 1.9 million. And so you can see that it's a minor increase over time or a steady increase annually for the operating budget. But we've got a little bit more of an increase over time for the capital. You can see we go from 1.9 up to 3.3. Once again, that's the, that's really addressing more of the life cycle replacement of the assets, you have a larger program. So we're staging it in at a nice pace over the next 10 years. So that's what's influencing your rates. And you can see that what we've provided for is roughly 2% increase in the base monthly charge, so that if you're down in Florida, you're still paying that monthly amount. And then the volume rates are basically increasing by 3% per year. So I think those are very reasonable rates, given that we're increasing the, you know, the expenditures on the capital side over time. I think that's a reasonable balance. Given that when we see places like Hamilton and Toronto and a lot of the communities, older communities, they've been, they've been running at roughly 10% per year for the last 10 years. I know some time back, we saw Windsor jump at 75%, jump all in one year because they were going with 0% increase for many years. And they, the infrastructure caught up with them and they had to really pump up the rates in order to address their issues. So I think that these are very reasonable rates over time. On the wastewater side, you can see very similar types of patterns. We've got the blue being your annual increases in the operating, so it starts at about 4.5, increases to about 5.9 over the period. And the capital related is about 3.8 million with going up to 4.1. The rates, a little bit higher, the base charge and the volume rates, we needed a little bit more in the front period, so we're suggesting 5% for three years and then dropping down to three and then dropping to two. So it's just something that we need in the early stage is a little bit higher increases in order to accommodate the capital needs. This is the, just the calculation of your average bill. If you're using 175 cubic meters, your current bill for water is $380, sorry, 2015, it was 380. You can see that it went up by $9. And then the suggestion is, it's going up roughly $9 or $10 per year. So your water bill is going up like 80 cents per month each year over the next 10 years. On the wastewater side, you can see it's a little bit higher. It's going up by about, what's that, $20, $24 from 2015 to 16, and then going up by a similar rate for the next two years, and then it's smoothing out. Overall, your total water bill is 8.62 right now, that would go to 8.95 and then 9.29. So as I say, it's going up roughly about $30 for your combined water and wastewater. How does that compare to others? You can see your current, these are the rates that are in place right now for all the different municipalities. The green is your current. The 380 goes up to 389. The 482 goes up to 506. And then, you know, the combined is 8.62 to 8.95. You see, you're well below places such as Amherstburg and Essex in Ward 3 and 4. Windsor's higher than you, Essex Ward 1. Chatham Kent is marginally, well, I guess, right now with the, they'll be going up as well for next year, but they're marginally, they're basically at your same rates, same with Lakeshore, so I'd put them all in about the same. To Come See is somewhat lower at 704 and LaSalle, so, and Kingsville, obviously. So you're at about the middle of the pack.
Just a couple of quick questions up here. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. The, our neighboring community here, we have sewage area 1, 2, and 3. And with their rates, is that truly reflective of what those rates are or are they combined in or whatever? Because that's like, it's a hundred and some dollars difference. Have you got me on that one?
Sorry, for the sewer rates? I think they have, I think they have different capital charges that are in place for those different service areas. So the capital charge is included in the rate. Are you talking about Kingsville? Sorry. Yeah, yeah. They have different, they have different capital charges for some of the improvements they put into different areas?
So they're technically, they're paying the same as us, so you're saying like they're just doing it in a different way? Is that, am I reading this right or wrong?
Well, Kingsville's lower than you. Is that the question or?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're lower than you, yes.
And why would be the question?
I don't think they've fully embraced the life cycle plan yet. I think their system's a bit younger in certain areas, but they haven't put forth addressing the asset management.
So in other words, they're not building reserves to, for the coming future?
That's correct.
Okay. Makes sense.
As I say, with the Water Opportunities Act, it's going to be mandated very shortly. I would anticipate with the, as I say, the new infrastructure act, we will see the Water Opportunities Act coming into full force once you've got the asset management requirements in place and then it all ties together quite well, so.
If I may, your worship. And then the asset management plan, did we not complete that a few years back? I thought that we had a pretty exhaustive review on the, under the asset management plans.
David?
Sorry, that question?
No, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Yeah, we did phase one of the asset management plan a couple of years back. Phase two is coming up this year that we're looking into expanding right now.
Okay. Peter?
Well, no, actually, I was going to address the issue of rates today in comparison to other municipalities without getting into all of the particulars. I think one of the easiest ways of thinking about it is preparing for your retirement or your pension. The later you, the longer you wait to actually start putting money away for that, the more you're going to have to put away at a later time to, in order to reach that level. At some point, you have to pay the piper. And I think what we're seeing here, especially as you look over the increases that are being recommended here, are gentle and over time, taking into account the kind of work that we're going to need to do in order to ensure our infrastructure is safe and appropriate. What other municipalities are doing is their deal. Sometimes we're comparing apples to oranges, but as far as Leamington is concerned, we are putting away the appropriate amount of money now in order to address our needs for the future. And I think that's the most important component.
And that is why I asked that question, because when someone looks at this, they say, well, hey, it's $100, $200 variance. And consequently, like, why? You know, it's the same thing, why are taxes cheaper there than here? And as your explanation says, we are looking forward to the future where they will be hit, I imagine, not saying they will, but the possibility is that they could be hit harder at a later date.
Yep.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor?
I was really going to ask the same question. My takeaway from this is we're being fiscally responsible as opposed to not.
Gary?
So we, I think earlier, we went through the engineer's report, kind of summarizing the key things as part of the water license. And I've just highlighted, one of the key components is this financial plan. As I say, it was, it was put under Regulation 45307. And it was all, we went a bit of a shotgun start in 2010, which was across the whole province, which was chaotic, to say the least. The province put this new regulation in place and gave everybody roughly 18 months to react to it. But now we're kind of, we're on the second iteration, so it's a little bit easier. What they basically require you to do is at least a six-year capital and operating plan, so you have to be looking at at least six years. We've gone out 10 in your particular plan. So as I say, the, it's really taking the rate study and integrating it into a stipulated format. We've gone through the requirements, that it must be made available to the public, the information must be advertised. And I guess the key components of it is taking these, the information and putting it into these. and putting it into these three different financial statements. Your Statement of Financial Position, which includes assets, liabilities, net debt, non-financial assets, operations, which is looking at revenue expenses, annual surpluses and accumulated surplus, which are terms that I actually hate, because they mean totally different thing at a municipal level versus a corporation, and then cash flows. And this is really, I mean, when we take a look at a rate study versus, you know, the financial statement style, it takes some of the information, like what we do on the budget is what's called a modified cash basis. The full accrual really pulls everything into, you know, spreading the costs across on, I guess, a, I can't explain how to go to do a full accrual, but modified cash really, what modified cash means, we have to spend the money this year, you have to generate the money to pay the expenditures. When you get into modified accrual, you're making adjustments between, you know, prior years and future years in order to balance the expenditures. We get into slight differences with life cycle costs versus capital assets. Capital assets are depreciated, and this is the biggest issue, is the fact that the financial statements or require you to do everything in historic values. So if you built, we talked about the water mains being, you know, back to 1930. Those water mains, if you had a million-dollar water main today, the value that you carry that water main on, on your books, is probably 5% of what it would cost you to replace it today, because you're carrying it at historic values. So you've got to depreciate it back to, it would be, original value would be like $50,000. And then with the financial plans, you then are writing off some of it, you're depreciating it each and every year. Probably the value they got on that water main is probably like, you know, $5,000. But here's a million-dollar asset we have to replace today. So the two, this financial plan is okay for reporting, but it's not a good financial document for planning. That's where your capital and operating budgets, where they're moving us with Water Opportunities Act, where Swissa, the Sustainable Water and Sewer Systems Act, was taking us, is all a forward-looking capital plan to replace the assets and to generate the money to deal with replacement of the asset. So probably that's the biggest difference in between the two different types of statements. As I say, unfortunately, that's what the province requires us to do. So as I say, we take it from something that, you know, is tangible, you can understand, we translate it into peace avenues, and there you go. But it's the mandatory document we've got to file. So the, as I say, the rate study, we have certain recommendations are there, and then the other recommendations really are related to the financial plan, and it's all there for your consideration. Once again, this is mandatory document, must be filed, so we're just assisting you in that regard.
Thank you very much. Shannon? Counselor Verviki?
Thank you, Your Worship, Mayor. On page 25, you have, like, do we need to have the drinking water permits? Do we need to have the permit to take water permits when we're not supplying the water to our residents? We still need that? Isn't that just Union that does that? And if not, I'd like to know what our, afterwards, how much water we are taking other than our drinking water?
With all due respect to the question being asked, that was all put in place under our DWQMS licensing requirement, which ties into everything that we do as an operating system. We have an operating authority, an operating system. Union Supplies and Treats, we purchase to supply. So with doing so, we have to take a license to do. And if we're looking at numbers, Leamington takes probably 53% of all the water produced at Union for residential, commercial, and greenhouse industry.
Any further questions? Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll go back to a little bit of financials here. I've always been hung up on the development charge reserves, and I know that by provincial legislation or municipal, however they word it out, that we have to budget or put in our budgetary each year an amount on development charges, even though we now have eliminated them for the last, for the next three years or for the three-year period. Are we still contributing or putting on the books development charge amounts? Because it's always been a sore spot with me, because we would say previously that we're going to build, I said 10 houses, and we budgeted development charges for 10 homes, and we built two. So we're always in a deficit in that particular category. And I know that, I don't know whether it's provincial regulations or provincial strategies that we do have to still do that, or can we eliminate that altogether? And you know where I'm going with this, I hope.
My understanding is where we are right now is we have development charges by law on our books. Council voted to hold it at 0% for three years, based on those certain segments. But where we should have been collecting development charge is now going into the Development Charges Reserve Account as an amount owing to that account. So we are recording it because we have to. It's a notarial account, so you're actually making the entry that you're in a deficit position. But I've also understood that if council at some point in time decides that we do not want to have a development charge by law anymore, that deficit just disappears because we now don't have to pay it back. Is that somewhat correct or not?
Well, to me, what's happening is that regardless of what we do, it's put in the budget, our annual budget, that this is what we expect. So we are in a deficit before we start, there weren't a deficit in the budget. And I know it's just book entries, but it's, you know, somewhat mind-boggling in the end because it looks worse than what it actually is, is what I'm getting at.
So Gary, you wanted to?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Because you have the bylaw and you have the three-year moratorium, well, let's put it this way, if you didn't have a DC bylaw, you'd have to fund the projects with your existing tax rates. So, you know, you'd have to, you wouldn't have any DC money, but they're growth-related projects you want to build in order to accommodate additional lands, so you'd be putting it on the rates regardless. What you've put into place now is you track it, as I understand, and if you had 10 units last year, you'll top up the 10 units worth of money and put it into the reserve. So if it was five units, you'd put the five, if you had 20, you'd put the 20. That way, you're keeping the reserve fund and the relationship with those projects in balance. If we're going to build that, you know, put that water main into a brand-new area to service growth, you'd be saying, well, it's 100% growth-related, so we would be drawing the money from the DC reserve. As I say, if you don't want a bylaw and you ended up not having a bylaw, you'd be picking up 100% off of the water rates anyways. So what you're just trying to do is to account for it, because at some point, council may wish to get back, well, your bylaw right now, I think, embraces going back in the fourth year and imposing charges, unless you do something to change that.
Correct. A little bit. Peter?
And actually, there are other mechanisms that can be used in order to fund those sorts of projects, but the current system that is in place is as was just described. But we will be coming back to you with some ideas in the future, and we'll be laying out for council the pros and cons of having this kind of system where growth pays for growth, or, I mean, somebody's got to pay for it. So it's either through the DCs or it's through the tax rates. But there are other mechanisms that may be available as well. We'll be coming back to you with some of those suggestions.
Okay. Counselor, sorry, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You might see now how dumb I am. I just want to make sure, give me the keep-it-simple, stupid version. The rate structure, you're telling us that increasing the base charges by 2% annually over the forecast period and the volume rate increase by 3% will keep us healthy, keep us where we need to be?
You're absolutely bang on, yes. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, and I don't know if everyone else got that in this as well. Okay, so we're good. So if we wanted to bump them up, we would be healthier yet?
That's correct.
But at this point in time, there's no need.
At this point, I think you have a very, I think you're addressing all of the needs as defined right now for replacement and such, I think. And I think the capital program is built up to a level that you're doing very well at maintaining it. Yep.
Counselor Hammond?
Your Worship, thank you. To Shannon and Gary Nelson, I want to thank you. This is a real in-depth and lengthy report. I would like to say that I wish I could understand all of it, but I think I've got a grasp of what's here, you know, with respect to capital and operating budgets and the need. And I think, moreover, I think the residents of our municipality deserve to know what's going on. They expect clean drinking water in light of what's happened in Waukinton, especially Flint, Michigan. And there's a cost attached to all of that, and this completely outlines as to why we need to be where we are. So thank you.
Okay. Shannon, do you have a wrap-up on that, or you're good? You're just?
No, I'm good. The recommendations, I can go over those again if you need them.
Actually, yeah. You make, well, it's the one at the bottom, page 30 of 38?
Yes, it's basically the same as the end of the presentation. To approve the report, make the report available and do a notice of availability, and then provide the financial plan and the council resolution to the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, and also the Ministry of Environment and Climate Change.
Okay. So moved by Counselor Jacobs, supported by Counselor Wilkinson. Discussion on the motion? All in favor? Okay, thank you very much. The next item up for discussion is a report regarding the Bevel Line water main upgrades. And Shannon, are you taking us to that? Okay, very good.
Thank you, Your Worship and council. Do you want me to wait for the two counselors to?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, so this report is to recommend that council approve an additional $968,000 for the installation of a new water main in conjunction with the Peely-Bevel sanitary sewer replacement project, and that council declare the replacement and upgrading of that water main between Secliff Drive and Monarch Lane to be a growth-related project. The additional scope of the project will be funded from the development charges at 65%, and the remaining 35% would come from the water line renewal reserve. And I've also outlined the capital expenses would be charged to the GL account that's listed there. Just to go through a little bit of a background on why we're asking for this now, the Peely-Bevel sanitary sewer improvement project was, is going to be presented to the municipal board, actually, tomorrow. The project as it is currently designed includes the replacement of cement-asbestos water main along Peely Drive from the Sturgeon Creek Bridge to Mercy Road 12. When the design project for the sanitary sewer happened in 2011, upgrading the Bevel Line water main wasn't included in the original design because the water main had only been in place for 20 years out of its 50-year useful life, and there was no immediate need to provide increased water capacity to that area. Since that time, as you know, there's been a significant change in the development patterns. There's currently approved and proposed future development in that area that has about 800 to 1,000 future residential consumers between Robson Road and Bevel Line and also Bevel Line and Mercy Road B. Administration retained STANTEC to do a water availability report for this area. STANTEC used the Union Water Supply System hydraulic model. They looked at existing and future population projections and also average daily water consumption. They looked at this just to determine if there was upgrades that would be needed in this area as a result of the development that's proposed. Based on the model and the design guidelines of the Ministry of the Environment and Climate Change, STANTEC came back to administration reporting that the existing municipal water mains along Bevel Line do not have the capacity that we are going to need for that future development. The model did predict that there would be impacts on the system pressures during peak hourly conditions, as well as impacts on the ability to maintain recognized fire flows along both Robson Road and Point Peely Drive. In order to achieve a system that will adequately support the currently approved and proposed growth that we may see, and also maintain fire flows and support future system upgrades in the southeastern rural residential area, administration is recommending two things to happen in concurrent with the sanitary sewer project. Replace the existing 6-inch cast iron water main with a new 12-inch PVC water main along Bevel Line from Secliff to Road B. And also replace the 6-inch main with a new 8-inch PVC water main from Bevel, along Bevel Line, sorry, from Road B to Monarch Lane. And those are both outlined in the key map that was attached to the report. The estimated cost to complete these upgrades is $968,000. The upgrades were not initially included in the water capital budget. However, administration is proposing that we do declare this a growth-related project and fund it from two separate reserve accounts. Based on discussions with Watson, a portion of the project can be identified as growth-related to be funded from the development charges because the upsizing of the existing water main is needed to service our future growth. Watson provided us guidance to calculate the growth and non-growth-related project costs. There's two different things that we looked at. 100% of the difference in cost to upsize the main from a 6-inch to both an 8-inch and 12-inch can be assessed as a growth-related cost. Secondly, a proportionate share of the replacement cost to simply replace the main with a main of the same size can also be assessed as growth-related based on the useful life that's left of the main that's in the ground. I do have a table that outlines the different costs. Based on administration's estimates, the cost to upsize the main is $877,645 plus the contingency, which gets us to the $968,000. That's the cost to upgrade it to an 8-inch and a 12-inch main. The cost to replace it with one of the same size would be $616,795,000. In the table, I've outlined the difference in the cost so that we can see the growth-related components. So the total growth-related component works out to be 65% of the total costs, and the non-growth-related cost would be 35%. If approved, the project will be tendered concurrently with the Peely-Bevel sanitary sewer local improvement project. Although it's not quantified in this report, administration does expect that both the installation costs and the proposed water main costs will be reduced by doing the two projects concurrently. Additionally, replacing the water main at this time will actually result in a more desirable alignment for the sanitary sewer as well. Administration is therefore proposing that the project expenses for this project be charged to the 2016 capital budget for, sorry, Peely-Bevel Line, and that the 2016 approved budget be increased from $563,000 to $1,531,000. Administration is also proposing that the development charge reserve be used to fund 65% of the costs and the water line renewal reserve 35% of the costs. The development charge reserve balance at the end of 2016 is anticipated to be $5.4 million, while the water line renewal reserve is estimated to be $3.4 million. So there is funding there in both of those accounts to cover the cost of this project. I think that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, Your Worship. This expanded line or increased capacity, will some of it be used to service the two new subdivisions that are online down there, or will they be fed off Robson Road as they currently are?
Nelson?
Through Shannon, Your Worship, council, or members of council? It will. What it does is it provides a secondary resource. Right now, those subdivisions coming online are being fed currently through Robson Road because the development is extending out to Bevel Line. How we address it going forward is with the number that Shannon provided a little earlier with 800 to 1,000, and we hear more around 1,300. What that does is we only have an 8-inch on Robson Road, and the main feed coming through the subdivision will be 8-inch, but you're tying to a 6-inch. So when you have to backfeed as a secondary loop, we don't have the capacity to provide that subdivision or subdivisions coming online with enough water, there's going to be a severe impact. We won't have any fire protection whatsoever, friction loss, and then pressure to push from a 6 to a larger line, it's not going to happen. So when we started going through the process of potential growth and what's happening, which was after the capital process, that we went through capital budget process, which identified the numbers that we're coming up with, we had to then go back. identified the numbers that we're coming up with, we had to then go back and look at it, and the only way to provide that redundancy is with a 12-inch. The 12-inch would then suffice plenty of water to backfeed the customers, but the biggest component we have to understand is not just Robson Road. Robson Road is your main feeder that goes down above, or Peely Drive as well. So if we don't have the backfeed to come into it, we're going to end up with a problem. So that's how we, a little late, but when we kind of got to the table and realized what was happening, we had to address the issue going forward. So it will backfeed. Right now, currently, it would not.
Okay, so your plans are that you'll connect those lines for the ability to backfeed if it becomes necessary to keep the pressure...
At the time that the development happens, yeah, there was no need to go ahead and structurally put things in place, to only leave a valve sitting there for 20 years or 15 years depending when they get there, right? So we have the capability today with all the intelligence to do a live tap without impacting anybody, so it will be there to accommodate that. And when Shannon mentioned to Road 12, that's just the secondary phase of what we're looking at in the future, was if anyone here really understands the water system when you get over to Road 12, Noble Side Road, we have a two-inch that feeds residential homes down there, that comes from a four-inch and a six-inch that's way down the end of the line. So that gives us an alternative feed to get back across the go-kart track, Goofy Golf go-kart track, which is Dean Road B, and then we can start to address those issues in the future. So we're strategically putting everything in place as was talked earlier to address future concerns and development.
Well, that's great forward-thinking. I think that's fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, excuse me, I too think it's a good idea to be proactive rather than reactive. We're thinking 20 years down the road, might as well keep our people the way they need to be protected and also with water, plain and simple. So I don't have a problem with this. I know the question is, it's only halfway through the lifespan of the pipes, but to oversize it or whatever the word is, is good when you've got the ground open for it. I don't think it's a, I don't want to say it's a no-brainer, but it's an opportunity, perhaps that might be a better word. It's an opportunity. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Just to add to your comment there, unfortunately, yes, we're only halfway through the lifespan, which on ductile iron pipe that was replaced back in 1991, actually, I did the installation, so. Unfortunately, you know, we're looking at probably 70 years on that pipe, but it's not the issue of the pipe, it's the issue of addressing the need. And like anything happens, we develop based on what's happening at the time, and then things come into place, and then we're undersized on what we need. So going forward, that 12-inch is not just going to take care of one specific or a couple of specific subdivisions coming online, it addresses potential for the remainder of the municipality out in that southeast quadrant as well.
Very good. Counselor Hammond?
Your worship, thank you. I guess a question maybe for either Shannon or Nelson. All right, we're going to have a cost here of $968,000, but what are we going to save by doing it at the same time, you know, as we put the sanitary sewers down there? Have you been able to guesstimate that? I'm putting you on the spot, sure.
Your worship and members of council, to kind of highlight, we didn't have particularly a number. We thought it was going to be greater, but what it did was it allowed us to give us an alignment, a better alignment. So what's happening is the existing sewer had to run closer to the edge of the road, which created problems with the hydro poles and everything else and other utilities. With this alignment coming in and us moving the water main further back or to the ditch side of the area, it allows them to remove the existing water main and provide them with a better alignment so they're off the edge of the road substantially so they can do the work. I think the number that was thrown around, don't quote me, but it was somewhere around $50,000 because they're utilizing the same trench, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a recommendation before us. Would Counsel, Deputy Mayor moving, support by Counselor Hammond. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Final report is one regarding the request for a noise bylaw exemption. And Ms. Orton? Oh, and there's an addendum as well. Yep.
Thank you. You have a report before you, and the request is coming from Casa de Racion Cristo Vienne. They are a local church seeking a noise bylaw exemption and also seeking to use D'Appart for a municipal event on Sunday, July 17, 2016, from 3:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. The event is open to the public, it is alcohol-free, and there will be food served. It's intended to provide activities generally for migrant workers who are away from their families, but as I indicated, it's also open to anyone to attend. The request is for permission to utilize D'Appart in conjunction with the use of the neighboring property at 14 Orange Street, which is owned by the Caldwell First Nation. Also, the request is for an exemption from the noise bylaw, which the prohibiting provision is that no person shall create unnecessary noise. And as the event is going to include music, the organizers were proactive in coming to council to seek the exemption. The OPP and Fire Services have been advised of the proposed event. The organizers are responsible to set up and clean up after the event. As I indicated, no alcohol is to be served. There are refreshments that will be available for free for the attendees. The organizers will be submitting a certificate of insurance in the amount of $2 million, naming the municipality as an additional insured. And as I indicated, there are arrangements with the Caldwell First Nation to utilize the inside of the building if the weather is bad on that particular day. They have held an event in the past in 2014, and there were no complaints regarding the music or the location. So the recommendation is that council grant permission to utilize the lands for the event on July 17 from 3 till 7, that council grant the exemption from the noise bylaw for that same date and time, and that the organizers submit that certificate of insurance.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Moved by Counsel Verbeke, supported by Counselor Wilkinson. Other discussion? No? All in favor of that motion? And carried. And then we did receive an addendum. I know it's kind of last minute for us, but staff has been working very hard on getting this through to this meeting because it's going to be a little while before we have our next one, and we want to get moving on this stuff. So I assume, Alan, you're taking us through this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report before you is to consider the 2016 surface treatment and gravel road elimination contract. The subject tender does include four portions of the 2016 road resurfacing program, namely tar and chip of Road 10 from Highway 77 to Road 12, and repairs to Road 10 from Mercy Road 12 to Kent Road 1. The tender also includes for the 2016 gravel road elimination program, which this year is Mercy Road 11 from Highway 77 to Essex Road 31, and Pealon Avenue from County Road, or Essex Road 8 to the south end of Pealon Ave. On Friday, May 13, we received one tender from Shepley Road Maintenance for just over The cost of this contract would be funded from two budgets, from the road resurfacing budget and the gravel road elimination program, and it's also funded from a contribution from Palmas Greenhouse through their development agreement in the area. So in the table, you'll see that the road resurfacing program is funded net from revenue. We have approximately $600,000 left in that account. Counsel, there's an asterisk there. Counsel may recall that we did include repaving of Georgia Avenue in an earlier water main contract. We are also funding the Road 12 from federal gas tax and again, from contribution from Palmas Farms. And we'll be back later in the year, perhaps with another recommendation if, after we let another contract for some additional resurfacing, depending on the remaining amounts in our budget. So we are recommending that council award this contract to Shepley Road Maintenance for just over $913,000.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that one question is going to come out from everybody here is why only one? So why only one? One quote. Why do you think that is?
I was going to mention that we do advertise across southwestern Ontario, but for the last couple of years, we've had one interested party interested in bidding on our contracts. They're just, there aren't that many contractors that do this type of work. We also are troubled by the fact that we have two paving contractors, or two companies that produce asphalt, the Millam Corporation and Cocoa Paving. It's just one of those things that there aren't that many contractors interested in road paving.
The way the industry has moved, in essence. Okay. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. In light of the one bid only response, are you comfortable with that price? It is within your targeted cost?
Yes, we're comfortable with the price, and we did check it against last year's prices, and some of the unit prices actually came down a little bit. Cost for the emulsions a little bit lower than last year, and the cost for the stone and the tar and chip is about the same as last year, so we're seeing similar pricing.
On that note, I'll move the recommendation.
Move and seconded by Counselor Hammond. I know I have further questions, so I've got the deputy mayor next.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Alan, the net from revenue, do you mean taxes?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Alan, with the completion of this project here, how close to total elimination are we with gravel roads in municipality?
Close.
Thank you. We have proxim, well, I can't tell you the length, but Road 21, Mercy Road 21, needs to be resurfaced. Road B, west of Road 12, Road 19, from, I believe, Road E to Road C. That might be the end of it. About four more roads to go.
So within two years, you think we'll have them completely wrapped up? Two, three years?
I'd have to check the capital forecast, but I believe we're looking at the end of the current five-year forecast.
But I'll tell you this. This one we're doing, Road 11, has been put off several times, so, and that can happen just because of budget restraint. So the goal was always to eliminate every gravel road we had, and we've been working diligently towards that, but there's no written guarantee anywhere on that. Hopefully will. Yep, just not fast enough. Counselor Verbeke?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. I was a little upset when we first saw this, then who was awarded the contract, because I know they did Road 10 from 12 to 37, and it was haphazard, but I do see that they are going to repair Road 10, so that is in this price, or is it we paid too much last time when they didn't do the road right?
Yes, it is included in this contract to make those repairs. And we're still making use of the padding and the chip stone that went down the first So just judgment calls in the field that we don't normally see. I hadn't seen it, I hadn't seen anything like that in the previous eight years that I've been working here. Our staff usually does a very good job managing the contractors.
Counselor?
So I don't know how that ended up on Road 10 there, but was there not anybody on the job? Will somebody be watching this closer so this doesn't happen again?
Yes, we'll definitely have people. We do have people on the job, on our paving jobs, full-time, and there will be somebody will definitely be paying close attention this year.
We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor? And carried. There were no matters for approval, or are there any other matters for consideration? Report on closed session, there was none, so we'll move into consideration of bylaws. Ms. Percy?
Bylaw 3316 being a bylaw confirming the proceedings of council from its meeting held May 16, 2016.
Looking, moved by Counsel Hammond, support by Counselor Dunn. Discussion on the motion. All in favor? Carried. No notices of motion were circulated, so we're into open session for council and administration. Counselor Dunn?
Through you, worship. I just wanted to tell everybody that I visited Port Dover Friday the 13th, and it was really crazy. There was a lot of people there. I'm really excited for Hogs for Hospice because I think this could draw a lot of people in. All the shops were being, were packed with all kinds of people, and the different venues was just incredible, actually. It was really a sight to see, and I'm very excited for what's coming to our little community, and I can't wait. I really can't wait, so go Hogs for Hospice. And everybody get out, pass the word along. It's going to be a lot to see, I guarantee you. Excellent.
Thank you. Counselor Jacobs?
Thank you, worship. I know I brought this up a while back regarding our staffing for our building department, and I guess my concern lies now that we have so much more going on the go. They pulled the, the high school has pulled permits. I believe that what, they pulled 11, I think 11 permits were just pulled for the, one of the subdivisions for homes are requesting 11 permits. And some of the other ones that are going on, and some of the big projects that we have, that are going to be very demanding on our department. And I guess my concern at this stage of the game is are we capable of handling it with the current staff? Because I know when these guys start building, do we have, you know, can we do timely inspections and, you know, carry on with the, with the work and so forth? And I just want to be sure that we've hung our sign out open for business, but I don't want to be in a position or place us in a position where we're going to be delaying some of these projects due to the lack of staff to be able to provide that. So like, I'm not always in favor of hiring a bunch of staff, but in this particular case, I really think that I have a great concern in that respect, and I think it's some of the concerns that some of the contractors have raised as well, because they don't want to, when they get moving, they don't want to be slowed down waiting for these inspections.
Mr. Newfeld?
I'm sorry to throw that out to you, but...
No, it's a, it's a concern of ours as well. We talked about this 18 months ago or so, and we said, won't it be a great problem to have? As far as the building department goes, we think that we're okay in that area. We have made some changes to our processes to become more efficient. We're hoping to be able to provide building permits on, right at the, right at the window for certain kinds of building projects. That's a change. However, the combination within the building and especially within the planning department, we are certainly feeling the pinch. We are currently addressing that by contracting out some of the planning, planning work, but we are also concerned about that. We are moving towards bringing in an intermediate planner without increasing the headcount. But what we're finding, what we're finding is even as we are restructuring those areas to become more efficient, it may be in the administrative level that we may be shorted ourselves. We know that it's incredibly busy right now. We're keeping an eye on it, but what we can't do is overburden our, our staff. And right now, we are in a bit of a peak, peak time where work outdoes the bandwidth of our employees. We're hoping to alleviate some of that, but even, even as we do some of these changes, it may be in the administrative area that we've shortchanged ourselves, and we are keeping a close eye on that, and we may be back to talk about that some more.
Counselor?
If I may, and some of the concern also lies with the, with inspections. I mean, do we have enough inspectors on? I guess there's not, aside from administrative level, you know, looking at the inspection. Because this is what some of the delays and some of the complaints that usually come back to us is that, you know, we need an inspection today, and they show up three days later type thing. Not, not that's serious, I guess I exaggerated, but the, they don't want any delays, I guess, and this is when they get moving, they want to go. So that's where some of the concern lies as well.
Peter?
Fair enough. I haven't been made aware of any of those sorts of complaints so long as we're following the process. It's one thing, I suppose, to expect immediate service without giving administration any forewarning, but we will continue to do the best that we can. And if we find that we're, we're holding up projects, we don't want to be doing that either, and we will, we'll make sure we're staffed up properly with council's approval.
Just if I can, Counselor Jacobs, some of the conversations you're obviously having, have they, have they said specifically it's the municipality of Leamington that's holding it up? Or do you know that, like we normally... it up or do you know that like we normally do, run into other agencies that are making it look like we're the ones holding it up?
It's not that we're holding it up. The concern is, I believe, that with so many major projects on the go and the amount, and hopefully the amount of building that we hope is going to take place, that when inspection time comes, they would need them in a timely fashion. That, you know, when it's time to backfill, they want to backfill or they want to put the sewer line in.
So it's an anticipated?
It's an anticipated, exactly. It's in the panic mode.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying.
All right. I just want to know where we, where we stand, so. All right. So open session, Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council may recall earlier this year during budget deliberations that we talked about and council approved an additional part-time bus route, a second transit route. And I am happy to announce that this Friday, we'll begin the second route. It'll run from approximately the Marina, the south end of Erie Street to the north end of Erie Street to approximately Wilkinson Drive at Erie Street. And it'll run up and down Erie Street every half hour on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays between this weekend and Labor Day weekend. And we'll, you'll see some advertising on our website early this week.
Good. Very good. All right. Just real quick from me then under open session and pretty much all of us were there on Saturday morning, bright and early. Really have to have a chat with people who want to have a ribbon-cutting ceremony at 7:30 in the morning on Saturdays, but, but, in the cold, yes. But Giant Tagger most certainly did that and we wholeheartedly welcome them to our municipality. I mean, Bill, you work there every day or pretty much every day in that area and I've gone by there several times and that parking lot, I've never seen it so full. So obviously they're, they're successful to start with as, and I hope it continues. So anyway, and I thank, I just want to thank all the council members that were able to make it out that morning and then, and certainly enjoyed that. Are there statements of members non-debatable? If not, then I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Dunn, Counselor Hammond, all in favor? And carried.